Let's open the May, uh, of June.
Yeah, true.
Time flies. Uh, the June 28th meeting of the planning board. And just for everybody's, uh, information, this is being recorded and broadcast on local cable TV. And, uh, minutes, we have two of them to take care of.
Yeah.
On top of my package, May 24th.
May 24th, I make a motion to approve them.
Second?
I didn't have any. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, next.
Make a motion to accept June 24th minutes.
Second?
This is very quick. Any discussion?
I have nothing.
Now. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye abstained.
And, that leads us to A and R's, which we have none. Which leads us to public hearings, you know, top of states, requesting an alert.
Extension you get to sign this time.
Yes, the applicant has requested a further continuous of the hearing from tonight until 7/26/2022. Uh, the materials that the board requested are already at this time. And related to this, the applicant or staff is requesting an extension of the final action deadline from 9:30/2022 to 11:01/2022.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
In the final action deadline too?
And final action.
And the deadline for action. Any discussion on that one? In favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, on to all of our subdivisions, which we have no reports. On Bryce Lemon or Brentville or Bear Hill. And I'm still not hearing any kind of noise from either Bear Hill too or Brentville Estates.
No, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen anybody over there working. Are they working on that?
There's not a soul over there.
Yeah, I drove, I was like, 'cause I do my Sunday drive by and I'm going like, "I don't think anything's changed."
Very little traffic going by our house.
I, I would've thought that they would want to get that crossover finished.
Bingo, that's what I was gonna bring up right now.
Yeah.
Um... I've heard a couple of different things, but I don't know anything for sure.
I think it would be a very good idea for our next meeting if we had Mr. Blair or Tom come in and please bring us up to date if they're planning on making it, you know, making that extension, or the connection rather of the phase three.
Make it operational so somebody can use it as a driveway. Or, I'm sorry, an exit to Bear Hill.
Exactly, yes, because we are a little bit over the length that we normally would've won the other one.
A lot of...
Yes.
A mile and a half or so.
But I feel that we should, because we don't know what the situations are gonna be in the future. I would like to see that road.
Well, I'm sure he's put enough money into it at this point, he's kinda wanna finish it, but... Like I say, I heard, I heard a couple of things, number one is being held up by engineering regarding the water and sewer over the well and crossings, which it wouldn't make sense if that went on for this long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I then heard another thing that this company that he's got doing the construction got a job, I think he set up at Haywood Wakefield Hospital.
Yeah, there's a big one going on up there right now.
And they pulled all the resources out?
Oh, we pulled out.
Yeah.
I, you know, again, that's rumor.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I like Dick's answer, we should have Cleon for the next meeting and basically get a timetable out of him and Tom of what's going on. Give us a schedule.
I think it would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not knowing what the future's gonna hold and, you know, gonna be building houses over there or not.
And then I'm gonna ask my basic question for Bryce Lemon, are you still on schedule to connect the two for this fall, the two roads?
I have not visited Bryce Lemon, I know he was, early he was working on that, on the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac that goes up, yeah.
That, that's...
I can say that they're gonna have a lot of cleanout in those manways, 'cause there was no silt protection on any of them, so those have gotta be loaded to the brim with crap.
Yeah.
So...
And once they're loaded, and they start flowing down the pipe, what's gonna, you know, clean those up?
Joe's anger?
Any.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so much for subdivisions. Number seven, master plan update.
Master plan update, so as the board knows, it was a public forum on the 8th of June. While it had limited turnout, there was a lot of valuable information that was received. The forum was recorded for cable and has been posted a number of times, so people who are interested, we've also provided access if people have any comments that they'd like to make, having watched the forum or have become otherwise aware of the master plan effort. Uh, the master plan steering committee will be meeting tomorrow night. Um, several chapters are under development. A phase three grant was applied for, I'm awaiting for the official word on that. How do we have a strong indication that the town's gonna be awarded that? So once again, thanks to the planning board for its contribution of the $1,913. Um, the whole full master plan effort will then be funded, including staff time of a substantial amount of time by staff as a payment in lieu of, of a fee.
Yeah, it's, it's moving along. Number eight, bylaw subcommittee update.
The, uh, I have to, just as in size, not necessarily on the records, but I woke up one day and realized that I could see, and I think my eye is not focusing in the same way. But anyway, I have come up with a plan that, uh, it's a three-phase zoning bylaw that I think will incorporate the, um, Mr. Corristi's, uh, bylaw request and the ones that we've been looking at, and I would be like, I'd like to present that to the board. Uh, our next meeting is, uh, the end of July, I forget the exact date. And I don't know if the group would like to schedule another meeting before then, or, uh...
If it ends in July, it sounds okay to me.
By that point, I mean, I'll have the draft of what I'm thinking of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, our, the 26th is our normal planning board meeting.
Mm-hmm, I think, yeah.
When would you have your meeting?
Well, Norm just said that we, I think we're scheduled for the 26th.
I didn't say that.
I think we're...
No, I've said that, you said the end of July sounds good, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Not to cut in, I believe the board determined the next meeting to be on the 19th.
Um...
On the 19th.
The alternate.
The third week.
Oh, okay, yeah, that sounded better to me. Um, yeah, that would, that would be fine with me.
I may or may not, depending on the agricultural permission that they're gonna meet or not.
So, uh, that would be a conflict with the other room?
Uh, we're still trying for Wood Studio.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we don't want filming, we don't want this stuff.
So, uh, yeah, we'll have to, you and I will have to coordinate that.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine, proposed zoning bylaws, standalone energy storage facilities discussion. And I believe we have...
Tom Corbett?
Here from, uh...
From Zero Point Development.
Zero Point. And, uh, he has sent a letter and a, I guess I'll say a possible draft of a amendment to our solar bylaws. And, well, I don't know, you have anything that you'd just like to comment on to start with?
Uh, yeah, so I've been, so Zero Point Development, uh, we've given a history here in Rutland. We've attempted to, uh, connect the whole bunch of solar fields back, what, four years ago or so, with National Grid, we had them all permitted. Uh, those incorporated battery storage with them. Um, and since then, um, National Grid at the time, about two years back now, gave us a four to six-year timeline on interconnection for solar fields out in this general area, um, especially out towards, on the 68 end. Um, so at that point in time, we as a company focused our efforts on addressing those issues and addressing, um, how to stabilize the grid and how to reduce the need for infrastructure upgrades. And with that comes battery storage, um, like you see now, I don't believe, I don't know if there's a battery in town here, I don't believe there is.
I don't believe so.
Um, but in the surrounding towns, there's quite a bit of energy storage coupled with solar. Um, so the solar's completely connected to the battery, the battery discharges to the grid. Uh, these systems here are part of the new Clean Peak program through the state. Um, the smart program, the smart portfolio is coming to an end in the state, and the rest of the capacity that is left with the smart program is really focused on the residential solar plus battery. Um, so that's on the outs, we still have some solar fields and such wrapped up in studies for that smart program, but the industry is shifting towards energy storage and really standalone systems that aren't coupled with solar. Um, so it's the belief now that we've got a lot of solar penetration in the grid, it's increasing the thermal ratings on the lines and really creating a need for infrastructure upgrades. Um, and through the Clean Peak program, uh, it sets out to cut the peaks out of the system. Uh, so your high, high energy demand times, like 4 to 9 p.m., these batteries would discharge, so National Grid's not buying high-priced, uh, peak, peak hour energy from ISO New England to service their constituents. So, what we've, what I've been doing lately is working on a portfolio of projects. Um, we've got a couple, uh, properties in town that I've got control over and entertaining, um, energy storage as part of the bylaw now, is it's not written into the solar bylaw. I've spoken with David McCray quite a bit, back and forth, and he pointed me towards David George here and started discussions with him a little bit. And I, what I do typically, I've been working with numerous towns now, specifically Lancaster and, uh, some Sutton Palmer. Um, I've permitted projects in Uxbridge, Lester, Lemonster, Orange. Um, so the battery storage stuff is coming, it's coming down the line, and these are really within the grid structure systems, they're not attached to high-tension lines. So with that, it limits the size of the project to a 10-megawatt project or less. Um, with a 10-megawatt project, the footprint of that is about, it's roughly about a half an acre of a site, like actually fenced-in area. Um, so they're pretty low-impact, high-density projects. Um, we try and cite them responsibly as far as close to substations or on a specific feeder line, three-phase line, that's in town, that has a high penetration of solar. So that's really the specifics of the Clean Peak program itself, is to target the, um, three-phase feeders that have a high penetration of solar to absorb that and be able to put that energy that's been produced at a lower cost into the grid structure during times of high demand. So I've been working with some towns on bylaw amendments and, um, I've permitted through solar bylaws that kind of talk about batteries in the past. Um, so I've got a couple of projects proposed in town, I guess to some landowners, um, so I've been working on trying to develop a bylaw for numerous towns, and what I typically do is I go to the solar bylaw as a reference and really kind of almost mimic that, 'cause it's really the same realm, it's in the same field. Um, and with that, it, it's already kind of set setbacks and guidelines and what to do. DCOM and all that stuff is already really well-written in the bylaw. Um, so I pretty much took that solar bylaw and really just formulated it back to energy storage. Um, so it's, wanted to propose it to you all and that's why I'm here.
Is this based on our bylaw or our...
Yeah, that's almost identical to the solar bylaw, um, that you have currently.
Oh.
In that, I just went through and changed it to like standalone energy storage. Um, I believe I removed a couple of the zoning areas, um, really limited to the R40 and 60.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you.
I didn't mean to...
I don't mean to interrupt you, you, we all set with your questions or not?
Do I what?
You all set with the question?
With that question?
I didn't mean to interrupt, I was looking to get the chair's attention, and you were speaking, so I apologize if I interrupted you.
Oh, no, I finished, I just, I would, wanted to be, clarify what I heard from him, that's all.
So, just to take a couple steps back on this, so because it's not written into the bylaw, it's not an allowable principal use at this time, so the discussion centered on what is necessary in order to have a zoning change occur. So that process was explained to, to Mr. Corbett here, that there's more than one way of doing it, some involve citizens' petitions only, some of the changes involve the planning board bylaw subcommittee, some changes are driven by staff. So the purpose of this discussion tonight was not to get into the, the details of the bylaw itself, that was shown as a representative of the concept of what it would look like if pursued. The idea tonight is to help provide guidance on whether it's a citizen's petition, whether the planning board would be involved, or whether the board wants to think more about it and get back with an answer. That's what tonight's about.
I have, well, actually, I have a couple of quick questions. Number, number one, uh, these battery storage facilities may, might very well be on a site different from the actual solar arrays.
Correct, yep, correct.
So, and so in other words, like, there's a substation on Pleasantdale Road, it might be almost adjacent maybe to that or something like that?
Correct, yeah. Um, for these, like, I think we've all know about the Bear Hill project in OCAM, um, the bigger project that they were proposing over there, that's a totally different animal as far as project size and, um, kind of scope of work. And these really target the individual feeders that come out of the substation. It's just nice to be close to the substation for ramp rates and being able to get the energy there fast. Um, but it doesn't necessarily have to be right next to a substation. Realistically, the way that it could work is really anywhere on that three-phase line. Um, but obviously citing them responsibly is pretty important.
The other, the other question I had was, uh, you're talking about 10-megawatt, is that 10, 10-megawatt hours?
It would be 10-megawatt, uh, AC capacity, total nameplate. Um, the megawatt hours, I'd have to get back to you on megawatt hours of the 10-megawatt, I believe it's 40, 45-megawatt hours?
Megawatts is a rate, not a, not a quantity. Megawatt, uh...
The megawatt hour is on a...
Hour is the capacity.
The megawatt hours would be, I believe it's 45 for a 10, for a 10-megawatt AC system.
45-megawatt hours.
That's huge.
That's a lot.
Yeah, and the footprint's relatively small. Um, layouts can differ through manufacturers, systems can differ through manufacturers as well. Technology, yeah, probably.
If, if we get involved, that's a half acre, 27 feet below ground is where the batteries are gonna be placed, so that if any of them catch on fire or do something like that, capture all the hazardous...
Norm, I think, this is my opinion, I think this needs to be referred to the bylaw subcommittee and Mr. Corbett to come up with a good bylaw. Um, I am, I'll be the first one in the town meeting, if it goes as citizens' petition, you'll hear me talk for an hour, 'cause, hey, I'm not put, that's, that's not gonna fly. So, I, I think this is a good opportunity to put this through the bylaw subcommittee and let them work on it. I guess say all of us, 'cause we're all on the committee. Work through this.
How, how many of our substations?
We need a lot of information, I mean, 'cause I don't know, I know enough about batteries that there's a lot of different types. I think there's, I think we do need to work with Dave on this too, that's, that's gonna be a big help for research, 'cause, and then the applicant provide information too.
I have an immense amount of information on, on particularly the systems that we're using, there are different technologies out there, but I would advise to only really narrow your acceptance to certain technologies, but we can also have that discussion as well.
So that's the reason why I think it should go to the committee, 'cause we're gonna have to talk about all kinds of permitting, you know, do we want the grid permitted before we actually go through?
Just wanna say...
All that stuff needs to be part of the bylaw.
Yeah.
So that's why I think it should be in the committee. So, to the high-level stuff right now, I think we should recommend this go to the committee.
So, if this does go to the bylaw subcommittee, I, and I indicated this to Mr. Corbett, that it's my understanding that right now the bylaw subcommittee is maxed out with its work plan, 'cause it has important bylaws that's currently working on to get ready for town meeting, so there was no guarantee that this would be taken for this coming town meeting. And you had something to say about your overall time schedule, I don't recall what that was, but what was that again?
Uh, National Grid timeline stuff, um, they've been studying one project in town here for probably about a year now, but, uh, the release date on having an interconnection service agreement will probably be about December, right around Christmas, um, in order to move forward with National Grid, but, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be in place either.
I guess I need to be more specific, so the town is required to have a town meeting in the spring. The, one in the fall is optional, typically it happens, so if they can't get on this fall town meeting, what about next spring, how does that affect your timeline?
It would affect the timeline on us, but I can't push you guys to have the overloaded either, you know, so it's like...
I wouldn't wanna put this on the fall town meeting, I'll tell you that right now.
If you tried it on the fall town meeting at this point, we wouldn't have a chance.
Yeah.
I think the spring's possible, I mean...
I think it's important for the board themselves to really, or the committee, um, to really review a lot of information, and, and I've got resources out there in the field that deal with water runoff and events of fire and, um, other, there's a group out of Boston that really is, has looked at a couple of my proposals for other people, um, for, as like a third-party review as well. Uh, so there are people out there reviewing this stuff, there are people out there permitting, and, uh, there are, Hubbardston actually just passed, uh, energy storage bylaw as well, um, so that's something also to look at.
We could pull from that, but...
Our OCAM neighbor did not.
Correct, yeah, I talked to, uh, the fire chief quite a bit about these projects, and I brought him out to Berwind about a month and a half ago probably to see one of our solar plus battery sites, to kind of get him comfortable and try and just put eyes on what it looks like. Um, so he didn't seem to have any concerns about anything here in town, his make...
What about environmental impact, have you had studies on that?
Try on Hadley, find an update on that too.
Yeah, Hadley, we're working through, I've been out there, uh, for months, uh, working through, I was trying to permit and they wanted to change the bylaw, just to have the bylaw, so we're, we're working on bylaw now for fall town meeting now.
I, I would really like to see some, what am I looking for?
Packers, no.
Now, some...
He's on the ad hoc bylaw committee.
Solar bylaw committee, yeah.
And he and I are solar bylaw.
Um, and a lot, a lot, a lack of words. Anyway, uh, I, I would like to get a fair amount of, I guess I'll call it, professional engineering review regarding the safety...
Yep.
...of these battery systems.
Yeah, and I can touch on that just a, just a little bit, we won't get in depth, but, uh, all these systems as energy storage systems, they have to pass a 9540A test onsite upon mechanical completion, and that's done after the system, that's a system as a whole certification. Um, inverters and all that stuff come with their own certification, just one to get in the country and, uh, be able to connect here, but there is a lot of, uh, safety features built into the systems as far as battery management systems, which is really your biggest prevention of any catastrophe.
Doesn't mean a dime thing, but where are they built?
The, while the, the whole system is built in China mostly, 99% of your batteries come from China, so most of your, uh, big producers of these systems are based over there.
And I'm assuming these are lithium?
Lithium, the technology that we're using is lithium iron phosphate, um, so there's nickel manganese, cobalt, and all those other technologies out there.
Cobalt's not coming into Rutland, oh, my dead body.
Even that, I would advise not as well. But the newer liquid cooled systems are typically just lithium iron phosphate, which is most of car industry, energy storage, that they're all kind of forming towards lithium iron phosphate, uh, for a number of reasons, but, um, we can also review a whole bunch of information around technology if we choose to in the subcommittee as well. Do you so choose?
So, just to clarify in my own mind, these are in conjunction with the existing solar fields or...
They won't be tied into them, they'll be tied into the same three-phase lines.
Right.
So essentially what these would be doing is charging, the batteries would be charging while the solar is being produced.
Right, I understand that part.
Yeah, the, the tariff itself, well, the, um, Clean Peak Energy Program gives us charging hours, but National Grid further restricts those hours, charging and discharging based upon, um, the load and all that stuff on the individual line. So there's a, there's a high-level scrutiny of National Grid studying these, they've been studying the first 30 of my projects for about a year and a half now.
And when was the first, uh, of your projects that went online?
Well, there's nothing online in the state of Massachusetts as standalone currently. They're working on numerous big projects, like two, 300-megawatt projects down towards the Cape, mainly to capture all the offshore wind.
So, what you're saying, the battery will be near the substation?
It could, if, if that's an ideal site, it doesn't necessarily have to be there.
So in other words, they could be capturing the solar powers being kicked in and sent from Spencer into our substation in Rutland?
Yeah, correct, instead of that energy being pushed back to the larger grid structure, it's getting diverted into the batteries to use it in that localized grid structure.
Their transformers will be maxed out even if they don't need them, and they'll be diverting that into the batteries for storage, for peakers when they need it.
And the big problem right now is National Grid, their substations all around and their feeder lines all around are just saturated with energy coming into them, and that's really the point of this program, is to capture that energy, to relieve the lines and defer infrastructure upgrades.
Because we lost 10 solar fields in this town several years ago, and one of them, they're talked about putting in a new substation at that time.
That was us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we switched focus to energy storage at that point in time. Um, they, they gave us a four to six-year timeline on those group of 70 projects, it was kind of disheartening.
And that's on a good, that's on a good day, they'll get into four to six years.
Yeah.
So speaking of what Mr. Corbett's talking about here, I, I actually asked that question, I made the observation that in the southeastern part of town, there were the tenant or whatever that were permitted by site plan, but they hadn't gone through the process, there were several continuances, there was a lot of work on both sides, um, and none of those came to be. So, how do you think that's gonna play against this change of technology? Is there gonna be a bunch of site plan hearings in which nothing happens, in which it's time, the resources spent on many aspects, only for nothing to happen? What's your projection in terms of the, the economics of this actually happening?
It's definitely going to happen, the DOE is heavy on this, and they're pushing National Grid and Eversource and Unitil to start implementing battery storage. To start implementing battery storage, there's mandates to have certain amount of battery storage within the grid structure as well from the state level. Um, and right now they're, we've been working with them on these first thirty projects. And they'll be being released from the group studies and. Once they're released and we get our interconnection service agreement, we'll be buying the actual equipment and starting that process of building them out next spring, summer.
Yeah, that's Norm, what I was talking about, it's part of the bylaw that interconnect service should be part of that bylaw, so. To Dave's point, we've got a little bit of, what's the word I'm looking for, reassurance that this is gonna go forward?
Yeah, and you won't, just a little quick comment, you won't see as many of these systems in town like you do with solar. So these really, you can only have so much energy storage for the penetration, because the way that the, the program is written. So you can't, you can't just go and put fifteen solar fields throughout town and have, or have the fifteen solar fields and.
You'll basically have two, one in each one of our subs.
It would really be, to me right now, um, it, my projection is one per feeder line that's really highly saturated. But it could end up being two depending on how things grow out this direction, but that's further down the line. Uh, the way they're looking at it right now is really limit it to one per, per line, and not all the lines in town are good for it. But there's a lot of information that national grid puts out there that I could also show you guys through subcommittee stuff.
If we jump on it and put it on North Rutland's high grid line and send it back towards Hubbardston, we'll screw Hubbardston, but we'll win. Because national grid was supposed to put new lines in heading towards Westminster, but they never did, never got the money to do it.
It's on the list.
Are the storage facilities tax exempted?
No.
They're not?
I don't believe so, no.
So that would be a, basically like the. Solar fields, it would be a.
Personal property.
You said they're not exempted.
Oh. So it would be a taxable.
They're still working through that part of regulation in the state level, but it doesn't look like they, it does not look like they will leave.
What about the rest of the country, I mean, this is obviously new technology in New England, but is it?
Yeah, it's relatively new here, um, in New England, I live in Sterling and we've got one with our substation, we've had a battery there for about seven, eight years now. And outside of Mass, you, well, inside Mass you'll see it, but mostly municipal light department substations right now. There was a program about five years ago for that, and other parts of the country, uh, predominantly California, Texas, um, those areas, they've been. Developing high, like high capacity, three, five hundred megawatts worth of storage. Not really doing the localized grid, because they're not really set up like our grid is, our grid goes like this, and there's this nice, nice and gridded out. So with our aging infrastructure here, um, as far as substations and feeders and, um.
So in other words, this basic technology has been used in different, uh.
It has been, yeah, and it's been used overseas for probably about two decades now to capture their offshore wind. They're probably about a decade ahead of us with this stuff, capturing their offshore wind and.
Europeans are ahead of us.
Yeah, and now we're starting to see that here with the offshore wind in Martha's Vineyard, and that will all go to, uh, the Brayton Point. And Mystic, uh, power plants, and those power plants will be retrofitted with battery storage as they get shut down.
A billion dollars wasted of your tax dollars in Massachusetts, thank you very much.
He worked for Eversource. Oh, I worked for Riley Stoker that you got, that they paid a billion dollars to, so he appreciated the money from the taxpayers, then they shut the plant down.
Yeah, we don't have to get into all the weeds, but I was just here to try and gain some momentum and get some direction.
Anyway, I agree with you Tim, and I think, uh, we ought to refer to the subcommittee. And it's. I guess I'll say for a selfish reason, uh, if the bylaw committee handles it, we have control.
Yeah. No, that's what I was thinking, it's no reason that we couldn't put it next up after we worked through these three that we're working on.
Yeah, 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 we don't really know the timeline of those either.
Yeah.
They could happen faster than we think.
Three or two?
There's three, but.
As one is.
Yeah.
Two, maybe two more, maybe, it's not, not to do anything with that third one.
Yeah, that's, I, 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 I'm seeing that two of them we can probably come, we can get through, it's that third one that's the.
Right.
Big pie in the sky, but.
So any more questions for our guest?
No, not at the moment, I. Something to think about.
Any other comments from Dave?
So I'm gathering that there's a consensus to refer this to the bylaw subcommittee, for a schedule to be determined. With the understanding that the board has a full plate at this time, that this is most likely to be the next item. Unless something of critical concern in the community comes up, that's gonna have a higher position.
Understood.
And we try to work our tails off to get it ready for the spring, the spring meeting, the main town meeting.
Yep, okay.
And like I say, appreciate any further professional accredited.
Definitely, yeah, keep in touch with, uh, David and get him some stuff and he can share with you all, if that's the correct avenue, is that the correct avenue?
Sure, the planning office can serve as the central point of contact on this matter, sure.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, last item on our agenda.
Proved.
Is the special permit decision for the new driveway. Do I have a motion to sign the decision?
So moved.
Hold a second.
And is there any discussion?
Me, of course. No, the reason why, um, even with the plan that George has over, David has over here. I, I. Physically on the site, there's nothing marked out. I am concerned about not only the well, but where it shows up next to, you know, the next door property. I feel that without having it marked on the property. Because there is no detail on the map saying how many feet it is between the line and the, and the driveway. So. Just physically it's.
Dick, I, I think we might have that covered, isn't like in seven and eight, where we talk about, um. Avoid increase, like stormwater runoff, so they've got, they've gotta take, when they put that driveway in, they've gotta make sure that it's not getting overflowed by water. They can't put site lighting, they gotta minimize impacts to flooding properties. So I, I think that is the teeth we have. As they're putting it in, if there's a problem, or I should say the teeth of the, the building inspector, to do something, I think. I'll let the board defer to me, but I think those sections in the special permit in seven and eight, give us that, um. Uh-oh. It's page, uh, four and five. And nine talks about adequate and appropriate facilities for proper operation, so. Dave, you can tell me, but I think that's given the building inspector some latitude to make sure there isn't.
It does, in addition to this decision, which is from this board with this jurisdiction. Is also permits that may be necess, that are necessary from the health department regarding well location and septic location. So that permit also has to be granted, um, and that, that permit also has to be granted, but that's the board of health's purview. And that's what they're adjudicating on, different from what the board is adjudicating.
So they dropped a well in before this even happened.
That's a problem then, then the, if they put the well in, inside of this driveway area, then.
How do, how do we know?
The building inspector has to look at that, right?
That's what I'm saying, you know, that's why I wanted to physically see post, this is where the driveway is, this is the bounds with this.
He's gotta use those drawings. And if, if that well is inside of the, is it fifty feet or a hundred feet of a driveway? Then he's basically gotta have them either move the well, or come, come back to us with a new plan for a special permit.
I don't think there's any requirement for a distance from the driveway.
To a well, you can't drive over a well.
No, you can't drive over.
Oh, okay.
It's close.
So, but how do you know where it is?
My, my next door neighbor, his well is only like ten feet off Britton Drive.
Oh, it's the house, it's got, I'm sorry, the sewer, sewer.
Septic system.
Hundred and ten feet away from. I apologize, that's what it was, okay.
From the well. And there again, I'd like to see even that, because the sewer system has not been put in to this place yet. And has not, I don't know how, it's gonna get into virgin ground either.
But that's not our.
I know it's not ours. But.
I know what you're saying, Dick, who's gonna enforce it? And that's been my argument in, in the big picture of Rutland for years, who enforces it? I mean, that was my problem with the Ag bylaw, is that there's six different entities involved in enforcing that. Who's the master, and there is none.
No, there's no master, each, each. Each board commission official has their own place.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, but. You either trust them or you don't trust them, and if you don't trust them, get someone to do it.
Well, if I go ahead and sign this, is there a leveling area before you enter what chooses street?
I think there was on that drawing.
It's also a condition, that I added this afternoon.
Yeah.
Mentioned.
Yeah, we talked about that, the leveling area.
Just emphasize that it's required, that there are DPW regulations that control, for the portion of the driveway adjacent to the right of way. And to emphasize the leveling, that was specifically added here.
Where exactly is that, what page?
The last page, nine. The second to last page, nine.
Yeah, number eight.
Number eight.
Portion of the driveway that requires approval from Tyler Rutland Department of Public Witch that is constructed per application by absolute DPW regulations. And include a leveling area adjacent to the public right of way.
So, um. I personally didn't think this is gonna be a mess for two homeowners, but it's caveat emptor. I use Sean's phrase.
Three homeowners.
Three homeowners, it's caveat emptor, I, I, you wouldn't be seeing me buying any, any one of these three properties, but you know what?
Somebody's already owned the first one, so.
Yeah, he's already building his house there, so the other two, you know. I don't see anything wrong with the special permit, signing it. Again, me personally. Wouldn't be me. But if somebody wants to, that's their call.
You need to have bylaw.
Yeah.
All right, it's seven twelve.
Got to get Dave out of here.
Dave needs to go, we need to go.
Is there any further discussion?
We've already voted on this, right Norm, which is the signature.
You have a motion of a second?
Oh.
Tim, Marilyn?
Sign the document.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of?
Aye.
I'll go along, whether than I.
We need all four of us to sign this, right, because it's a special permit.
You have a special copy that you signed there. Well, I suppose it could. Any questions, comments, or anything?
No, just trying to get a feel for.
Yeah, this is a pretty bland meeting.
Yeah.
Let's put it this way.
It's two in a row.
It is, it's two in a row.
Not the way it usually goes.
Yeah, this is usually a nine o'clock meeting.
That's what Norm said last time.
I'm getting a little fearful for what's coming. Something's gonna happen.
You got a boss that's gonna drop out of the housing, we can have more business meetings.
Right. Somewhere all hell's gonna break loose, I know.
I think it's gonna be the other way around, it's gonna. We're gonna have a bunch of empty properties. I did have one question before we get to the adjournment thing. We've got a couple like, like, uh, Noble Hill and let, the special permits have expired. Do we need to go to, because they were actually definitive plans, do we need to go through a rescission process of that subdivision? Officially? Just wanted to ask the board that, because special permit doesn't allow them to move forward, but I thought that dot the i's and cross the t's, we should go through a rescission process, but I wasn't sure. How's that motion?
It, it would, it would have to. Well, I'm not sure. My, my gut feeling is it wouldn't be successful.
I think it would be, because there's been enough changes in the. No, it's, it's the way the law's written.
Actually, this, it's, it would strictly be in. It would be in special permit state law. And. At least to my way of thinking. Language at least, as I've seen it, doesn't really even make too much sense. Because it makes no mention of substantial use. Of a special permit.
The substantial use standard is not in the zoning act, the substantial use standard is in the case law. That's on subject to the, this issue. So this case law that discusses what substantial use is, and that's really what the test is. If the land sits vacant, nothing ever happens with it, the special permit is not really used in any meaningful sense. Um, examples of using the spe, the special permit have to do with, uh, putting in utilities. Changing their topography, things, things that have some substance to them. It's not merely just moving earth around on a site either.
Or cutting trees down.
Not necessarily cutting trees down either, so there's a standard here.
Can it be like going through the permitting process of other agencies? Can that be considered substantial?
I think the case law, from what I've seen, considers that as use. But it's not just boiled down to one criteria. It's fact specific, as you've heard, and in these cases it's gonna be fact specific, or maybe it's not. If there's absolutely nothing that's happened, well, there's less facts to consider than if things have actually happened. There's once things start to happen at the site, then there's more things that have to be considered. Uh, so we think we're talking about this in conceptual terms, we're not really making any judgments on any particular subdivisions. We're just talking about this matter in general.
Yes.
At this point, and those are some of the things that come into play.
I just wanted to get stuff off the books that have been sitting there for fourteen years.
It would be, probably not a, a bad thing.
That's all I wanted to, I'm not looking to cause anybody headaches, they can reapply with the same design and start all over, but let's just get it off the books, so.
Now then, but they have to put in where the bounds?
Yeah, it'll have to be updated.
Updated.
But. I guess what I'm getting at is I don't want, uh, Brittenella Estates in nineteen seventy-six that was on the books for how many years? And then modify to work now, I don't want any of that, let's. If you're gonna build a subdivision, come in, get a special permit or whatever you need, put the definitive plan in and go build it. Not put it in 401K and hold on to it for ten years and then build it, I, I don't like that.
Yeah, because all of a sudden I just saw on Route sixty-eight, a marker put up. On Harry Johnson's old property.
Oh, yeah.
The one that didn't have clear title way back when. Right beside George Christie's place.
Oh, yeah.
All of a sudden there's a marker sitting up there. I don't know what's happening.
I only think it's, it's, again.
But that was never, that, we never got a definitive plan on that anyway.
Are the only one we're talking about, I think, is Noble Hill, because the rest of them have just basically passed away, because we never got definitive plans.
All right.
So I just wanted to get that off the books and we're done with it, and then I, I have no problem coming back in for it, I'm more than, build it, that's fine.
I don't know, I, I think I would kinda like an evaluation from KP Law regarding procedure.
I'm good with that, Norm.
I think it's a good idea.
Because I did my research on the. Because I did my research on the Mass state laws for rescinding a subdivision, but I am no lawyer.
No, I wouldn't mind going in an executive session with Amy coming in and talking to us about it.
Wouldn't have to be an executive session.
Oh, yes, we don't want the public to hear.
See, the one, the one thing that just bothered me, and this is just, and again, I have no idea whether there's any value to it or not, however, this was a number of years ago. Lee said that if they have a subdivision plan approved and they mortgage the property.
That's incorrect.
You can't rescind it.
He's wrong on that, because I checked Mass general law. If he has individual people with those properties mortgaged, like say Marilyn, Dick, you and I, then he is correct, but if he has those individual properties mortgaged under one entity, state law or does not, basically says it can be rescinded. So that's the one thing that, that I took face value from another attorney and just assumed it until I went and read the law, but again, that's a KP question, that's a great KP question, ask that question, am I right, wrong?
I think if the board's going to go down this road, you, the board's advisable to understand if the ground is solid or not, so these are the questions we should want to get answers to and not to understand.
I don't mind spending a little money on KP and.
Bring, bring Amy in and let's quiz her, yeah. Give her an idea of what we're.
I don't know if we have to have her in or not.
Well, she always said she'd be more than happy to come and she's never been here.
I don't know, if you want her here.
I wouldn't mind, because sometimes when conversation comes up, another question comes out of that conversation, so.
But I want to make sure she.
We could give her a list of what we're looking to do.
Yeah, I want to make sure that she has time to do a little research herself.
Yeah, she's prepared before she comes here, I think that's a good idea.
We also have the availability of.
We could zoom her in too.
Yeah, I suppose.
Let's just pay for the drive-out, I'm okay with that, because then she's here. I don't know, that's my opinion, I like her here.
With that, since it's going to take us a couple of minutes to clean up this place, I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.